The meeting of the North Smithfield School Committee reconvenes in open session at 7:00 PM. Before we say the pledge of allegiance, I want to remind you that on the podium there are signup sheets for the portion of the meeting allowing for public comments, so if you'd like to speak, please be sure that your name is on the sheet. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. May I have a motion to seal the executive session minutes? Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? So moved. In compliance with Rhode Island general law 42, 46, 4 and 5, there were no votes taken in executive session. A portion of our meeting where we will recognize students.
Good evening, everybody. I want to thank you all for coming, and I know on the way out of this whole session, some people recognized the support staff for their help, and I want to say thank you too, they came down and set this up rather quickly, so I should. This is really kind of one of the most favorite parts of the agenda, student recognition. North Smithfield Elementary School. The NSCS leadership award is presented to the second grader, Juliana. Juliana, how did I do? Very well. Juliana was nominated by her teacher, Mrs. Swanson. Juliana sets a good example for all, including her teacher with her positive attitude about school and learning. She is a responsible, reliable student who arrives at school each day with a smile on her face eager to start the day. When Mrs. Swanson looks around the room, Juliana is the first one in her seat each morning starting her work. She always uses her time wisely and constructively in class, taking great pride in doing quality work. Juliana puts the same amount of effort into each part of her day, and is productive and involved in all of our class lessons and discussions. She is well liked by her teachers and peers. Her kind, friendly demeanor makes her a role model for her classmates. She is one of the first to help one of her friends if they need it. Most importantly, clean up a mess, or share a riso with, he has with someone else. Congratulations, Juliana. Walters or Bishop Award, keep up the good work. The Howl Well Reach Recognition Program Award is being presented to the fourth grader, Judah Shabbos. Get it right again? Did I get it right? Judah has been nominated for this award by his teacher, Mrs. Senical. According to Mrs. Senical, Judah is one of the most respectful students he has ever worked with. Mrs. Senical has been teaching for over 20 years and has known hundreds of students, so this is saying a lot. Judah is polite and courteous to students and adults. He can always be counted on to help out in the classroom without being asked. He has worked really hard to improve his reading and writing skills during the school year. Congratulations, Judah, you truly reached for the stars. Middle School, Madison Riley. Sixth grade student at North Smithfield Middle School is this much recipient of the Principal's Recognition Award. Madison, as a sixth grader, won the middle school's 2016 spelling bee this year. She competed against many other sixth, seventh, and eighth grade schools. Madison then moved on to the state championship. This is quite an honor. It is a great pleasure that we've recognized Madison for this remarkable accomplishment. Madison Riley. The high school. Jamie Smith. A 10th grader at the high school is the student of the one. Jamie is also the winner of this year's high school poetry out loud contest. He competed against fellow students in Mrs. Savoli's and Mrs. Valerosa's class. Jamie has been analyzing, practicing, rehearsing, and at last competing in order to select the classroom winners. The contest was held after school with the students performing in front of panel of judges. Jamie took first place and will now compete in a statewide competition held at the Rhode Island State House on Sunday, March 13th, which happened. Congratulations to Jamie as this year's winner of North Smithfield High School's Poetry Out Loud Contest. We wish you all the best as you compete at the state level.
We have several students here from the We the People program. Would someone like to make a motion to move them to the next annual meeting?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? So moved. Mrs. O'Brien, give your pass.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to take this opportunity to introduce my students. We're going to speak a bit about their experiences in the We the People program and our trip to Washington DC, and I will turn it over to them.
Hi, I'm Corinna Loria, another 39th grader. We the People is a program from the Center of Pacific Education that gives students the opportunity to look further into the contents of government and ideals and central doctrines such as the natural rights philosophy, classical capitalism, constitution, three branches of government, and so much more, and allows them to form their own opinions on different topics. These opinions are expressed constantly and conveyed throughout the year on topics as current as the death penalty and get control, as far back as the colonists and constitutional convention, who were both elected members of the convention and try to take the day away. This is the importance of compromise taken in 1787. It provides the students with a chance to demonstrate their knowledge at a congressional hearing, one at the state level, and if the team wins, I will have another one at the national level. We write three papers, both state and national. These papers are very complex, take a while to write, require a lot of commitment and dedication outside of school. These topics vary greatly as each unit covers a different topic, and therefore requires us to learn a lot of material in a very short amount of time. Furthermore, this program helps us to be better prepared for a mission old enough to develop and understand what is growing faster and faster around us, the government. Students who take this course will have great understanding to govern our representative of people, and this understanding will help them to get a job through the process.
Hi, I'm Eric Fuglese from 111 Great Road. We just wanted to thank you guys for all the support that you've been giving us, especially $5,000 that we've gotten. We're really excited to go to Washington DC this April. We're going to be staying for five days, and we're going to be competing in the national competition against other states, which will be like the first time we're actually competing against other groups. At the competition, we have to read the papers that we've been writing, and then we have to answer six minutes' worth of follow-up questions, which we have, we actually don't know the follow-up questions like ahead of time, so it's one of the huge challenges is being able to think on the spot like that. So we've been studying and practicing this for just, like, for the entire year, like, we've been putting so much work into it, and so we're totally, we're definitely stoked to be doing this for the, like, we should have to be doing this for the first time. And like, aside from the competition, we're also going to be visiting all the museums, the monuments, everything else that we can see in DC. It's so, it's just, I'm just glad that we get to have this experience, so just thank you, thank you so much for your support and stuff, and just thanks for letting us speak.
Good evening. I want to thank you all for taking time out of your very important meeting to listen to us. I'm Caitlin Walsh, and I live at 357 North Main Street. I'm Unit 2 of We the People this year. We have many upcoming events that we really appreciate you guys coming to. So on March 20th, we will be selling raffle tickets, which we happen to have them with us if you guys are interested in buying them. With the raffle tickets, the raffle will be drawn at our dress rehearsal, which I will explain further. You can buy, you can win a ton of different things. If you read the tickets, you'll see there's stuff like a Patriots hoodie, a Patriots fleece, a bunch of Patriots stuff. There's a bunch of gift cards to a bunch of different restaurants, and I recommend buying raffle tickets because there's a good chance of you guys winning because there are a lot of prizes. So on March 20th, we'll be selling raffle tickets in front of Bridgerton's Marketplace in Slatersville. On March 29th, we'll be hosting a Gators Pub fundraiser for, it's happened many times before, and we really appreciate if you would come to that. When you eat, a percentage of the profits that Gators Pub makes will go to our We the People program. This event takes place from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM at Gators Pub in Slatersville. At this event, we will also be selling these raffle tickets. On March 8th, we will be traveling to Williston East Hampton School and competing against the Massachusetts state winners, which will be the first time we will be competing against another school. As at the state competition, we didn't compete against anybody because everyone else dropped it. And this is a great opportunity to prepare for nationals, the national finals in DC. On Sunday, April 10th, will we have our car wash. This event is $5 and will take place at North Smithfield High School from 12 to 3:00. We are currently selling tickets now, so if you want to buy them, just let any of us know. On Wednesday, April 13th, as I mentioned before, we will have our dress rehearsal. And we actually do have some invitations now that we'd like to hand out to you, school committee members. At this dress rehearsal, the raffle tickets will be drawn. And inside your invitations is an invitation to our dress rehearsal. There's the, a little flyer for our Gators Pub night, and then there is a sample of what your raffle ticket will look like when you buy them. So at this dress rehearsal, you'll hear us present our papers and run into follow-up questions. We'd really appreciate if you would attend any of these programs, any or all of these programs and events to help support our We the People programs here. Thank you.
I just, I will speak incredibly briefly because it's more important to hear from the students, but I do just want to encourage everybody to come to our dress rehearsal on April 13th. When you go to Washington DC, the judges who are there have talked about hearing these students give their presentations to restore faith in our democracy because they're young, articulate, professional, really knowledgeable. I mean, it's obviously what we look for as we educate all of our students in this community. So not everybody can go to Washington DC to watch them, so if you can go, it's here at the middle school, it's April 13th, you will be amazed at how they're able to present and respond to really, really complex questions. So please try to go, there'll be some information out there about it. And I did just want to say that all of the hard work of the students, of the community, all of the support that I provide for them would obviously help to enrich them personally and in their high school experience and their role as a citizen in our democracy. But this experience, this experience of them going to Washington DC is really possible through the financial support that we get from programs like this that really helps to enrich the students in our community. So thank you, and I hope to see a lot of you at these events moving forward.
So for those of you that are maybe new to us here, you have to appreciate that they're all freshmen, and they compete against juniors and sometimes seniors. And we're unique that what you do, you do with freshmen. And I don't know if you can appreciate the fact that what Natalie has started here is really impacted the culture of the high school for many years in a positive way. There's a real desire of children, our students, to participate in social studies and get into the courses that they offer, and they carry the values that they learned this year throughout all of the years of high school. Lastly, we owe a big debt of appreciation to Natalie because she does this on her own. It's not a stipend position. She puts in the hours and the time and the effort, year after year after year. Phenomenal, phenomenal person. Doesn't want the credit, I'm sure, but she's going to get it, so I want to thank the students, but I especially want to recognize that.
Thank you to all of We the People and this convention. We certainly wish you the best of luck in Washington. The next item on the agenda is the public comment section. There are 13 people who have signed up for the two agenda. So I would like you to deliver your remarks for three minutes, and the first person is Mrs. O'Hara, who wishes to speak about teachers' responsibilities.
Ladies and gentlemen, I, when I first wanted to come to address the school committee, I didn't realize that all this was going to happen. And I'm glad I'm here tonight as I see these children receive these typical roles. It brings tears to my eyes. When I see these, the young group beginning to participate in politics, getting involved in what's happening in our community, our state, and in the nation, I'm overwhelmed, but I'm also overwhelmed in a negative way. I'm going to tell you why. I am coming here to ask you to set up some type of protocol to address longtime teachers that are retiring. In the past, I've been in this town since I've come back, it was in the 70s, and I went to many meetings where a teacher who taught 30 and 35 years, they made sure they knew the essence of what they did for our town, whether they be tallies or live somewhere else. And at your last meeting, you accepted a resignation, and I'm going to tell you exactly who it is, Lisa Murphy. Her name, it was accepted, no accolades were given. You know, it's wonderful, but it's sad that the second grader got more attention than a woman who worked over 35 years and out right now, I've worked with her. And it wasn't just during school hours. We had adoptive family before there was adoptive family. I'd make the money, she'd spend the money. And it was on her own time. We helped children working poor. I addressed the family if they were acceptable. I would raise funds. We had yard sales. We'd collect on Friday night. We'd work all Saturday, clean it up, load up my truck, you know, and then I'd say, okay, we've got so much money. And there are people in this town that are generous above generous. Some of Les left us, and I'm going to tell you who they are. Nick Piciotti, who lived here many years, and anytime there was a kid in this town that needed something, all he said is, "This enough." Then I hit on Lisa. So then she'd go out and she shocked, not for the sake of getting over things, as if these were her own children. Took time. We'd see bundles at 7:00 in the morning, you know, paper to wrap, and during lunch we'd check it out, wrap it. Then because we really thought our privacy was important, because these people were very working, they weren't used to getting help, that at night you saw cars going around and slow, we weren't trying to, you know, look what we could knock off a house, we're just trying to find houses. And Lisa was there 24/7, even though we, she had a pencil shop, and she had the kids running, and with that money, kids needed sneakers, they needed this and that. Lisa was there. And some of the stories are my Christmas plays, I shouldn't say suck it or into it, but it was that. And we wanted snowplains. Of course, I'm too short to even reach it with a ladder, so there was Lisa, over 300 snowplains pinned to, we were there forever, you know. At first it was funny, then she wanted to kill me, but she got over it. But we raised money to help kids, and that wasn't in a contract, it was in her heart. And when she gave you that name, and I found out afterwards, I said, I couldn't go, what happened? And people that came said nothing. We don't, you, I think teaching is also a vocation. You've got to make a living, but you heard of the program tonight and all the time giving up, there are a lot of people like that. So, you know, ladies, you know, I look at you, we're all taxpayers, Mr. Clifford, remembering you with blueberries in your wagon, selling them, that's how far we go back. We have to set up a protocol. Give these teachers, and let me tell you, Lisa's here. Well, we've got to set something up for this person. We really do, and I'm not here to say you're bad because you do it, but years ago, I guess the people were odd and longer, but I think a person who's given this much of her life has to be acknowledged. Invited to a meeting, acknowledged at that meeting, so that when she goes, and this was a heavy, I can assure you, that she will be given the accolade and the thanks that she deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Hara. That's a wonderful idea. I wonder if Lieutenant Flimber will put together a protocol for that in the future. Thank you. The next person is Tracy LaFrenia.
Good evening. Tracy LaFrenia, I live at 26 Maple Avenue. I've recently moved here to North Smithfield, and after I had my first son, my husband and I were looking for a community that had three requirements. We wanted it to be safe, we wanted it to be close to family, and we wanted a school with, I mean, we wanted a town that had an excellent school system. And obviously, North Smithfield fit that bill in all three parts. And I know this because even though I'm a recent resident, I'm not new to this town. I grew up here, and I've had the honor of teaching here for 18 years as a reading specialist at North Smithfield Elementary School. And during my career, I've enjoyed not only working with amazing colleagues and families and students, I really also enjoy volunteering my time to make a real investment in this town. I've served on several committees voluntarily, including the School Improvement Team, the Language Arts Curriculum Committee, the Formative Assessment Team, the Professional Development Advisory Committee, and that's just to name a few. I've also organized and attended many events for parents and families, including the annual Family Literacy Night, Family Math Night, Curriculum Information Night, Title One Information Sessions. And I've also been honored to represent North Smithfield at a state level. I've been proud to be a representative of North Smithfield as I wrote the Comprehensive Literacy Plan, been on the state literacy team, an executive board member for the Rhode Island Writing Project, and most recently as Rhode Island State Teacher of the Year. In my role this year, I've actually had an opportunity that not many teachers get. I've been able to travel around Rhode Island and visit different schools and different classrooms in different communities. And I've been inspired and impressed by the amazing teaching and learning that's happening around the state. But just like when you go on vacation, you're always grateful to come home. I'm always grateful to come back and say that I work in North Smithfield. And I recently read on social media, which is something you couldn't always do, that North Smithfield teachers have the best, and I believe that that's mostly right. We have dedicated and expert educators that work tirelessly for our students. We have parents that are involved and engaged. We have understanding and supportive administrators, and we have staff that takes pride in constantly improving our facilities. And yet somehow, there always feels like there's something missing. And I recently visited a school in North Providence to award one of their teachers a Golden Apple Award, that's part of my duties this year. And as we were waiting to make the presentation, I was talking to some of the people in the room, and I talked to several of their school committee members, and I remarked how wonderful it was that they were there to support their teachers. And one of them said to me, "We are just so proud to have such excellent educators in our schools that we try to celebrate them every chance we get." And I thought, that's it, right there. That's what we sometimes feel like we are missing. And this is not unique to North Providence. This has happened, the same scenario in Cumberland, Central Falls, East Providence. Each time, I meet school committee members and town council members that offer words of praise and respect for their educators. Unfortunately, here, we don't always hear that same language. We hear words like, "You could extend the school day and teachers are still part-time workers." And we hear that we're not heroes like firemen and policemen. And we're offered contract proposals that specifically eliminate language, that offers teachers effective and consistent support and disciplinary action, and language that seeks to prohibit us from leaving the building during unassigned lunch periods. And not only is that language obviously disheartening, but it really deteriorates the negotiating process and dishonors the work that we do every day. So I'm just here to ask you, our school committee, and us on our side, to use this as an opportunity to change the dialogue and the discourse that we have with teachers and about teachers, because it truly matters. It matters the culture that we create, not just within our own community, but for our students. I promise you, we work better when we work together, and the negativity destroys what we're trying to build, what I believe we're all trying to do, which is to make a wonderful school community and learning experience for our students. Thank you.
Kristen Murphy, 60th Road Drive. I am a parent of a child here in North Smithfield, as well as an elementary teacher in the district. I came to teaching later in life, after a decade or so in the private sector. I worked in training and development and human resources, ending my private sector career as a human resources manager for a manufacturing company here in Rhode Island. I have been teaching for a handful of years now, and can truly say I am thrilled I made this career change. Working with children, helping them learn, and seeing Working with children, helping them learn, and seeing that moment when it clicks in a child's eyes is incredibly rewarding. And I'm lucky, because I've had the opportunity to be on both sides of the fence, so to speak. I've seen what it's like to work in both the private and the public sector. And I have to say, I am saddened that as a teacher in the public sector, I am treated as less of a professional than I ever was in my private sector career. I have called greedy because I asked to be paid a fair and equitable wage for the job I now do. That is hurtful, considering that I made $25,000 more a year 13 years ago. That's right, $25,000 more a year 13 years ago. Only now, I have one more master's degree than I did then. Only now, I work to teach students to read and write, add and subtract. Only now, even after giving my best, my career can be in jeopardy if the people I'm responsible for don't perform well on a standardized test. I think this idea that teachers are overcompensated is a dated one. Yes, there was a time when teachers were considered well compensated. Their salaries weren't very high, but it was made up for the benefits they received, excellent healthcare, pensions, et cetera. Those benefits are a thing of the past. Each year, the amount we pay for benefits increases, while our salaries do not keep pace, to the point that now our teachers that have been teaching for 15-plus years lose money as each year passes. That's right, our most seasoned teachers are punished for having experience in their chosen valuable fields. I can tell you that as a teacher, I work harder and longer than was ever needed in my career in the corporate world. How is that possible, you ask? You have the school vacations and summers off, you say? True, but what you don't seem to realize is that teachers are continually working, nights, weekends, vacations and all. We easily work 55 hours a week during the school year. No, we're not in the school building for all 55 hours, but we're working at home many hours at night and on the weekends. Okay, you say, but you still have the summers off? Yes, we have the summers off from being in front of the students in the school building. However, we are spending that time researching new instruction methods, reading professional journals and books, restructuring our instruction, attending seminars and conferences on how to integrate technology in our classrooms, and how to differentiate instruction for varying learning styles, and reworking our curriculum accordingly. All during our summer off. We're also out purchasing materials or making things for our classrooms, because unlike in the private sector, where the employer provides the materials you need to do your job, in education, much of what is needed for a teacher to do his or her job is provided by the teacher. Think about that. We are rated on how well we do our jobs and risk losing our certification to do that job if our students don't perform well, but we're not even provided with all that we need to effectively do the job. We didn't go into this profession to become millionaires, we knew we weren't going to get rich. We're not asking for the moon here. What we're asking for is to be treated as the professionals we are, to be treated with respect and dignity. We are asking to be paid a fair and equitable wage for the work we do. We're not the enemy. We educate the future, and we need your respect and your support. Thank you.
Amy Wright? Good evening, I'm Amy Wright, 91 North Main Street in Slatersville. As most of you know, I am a town resident, an educator, and the NSTA president. I come before you to ask for your cooperation and support in building a positive relationship with the educators of North Smithfield. As you can see on our red shirts, we believe that education is a team effort, and education in North Smithfield will only be as good as the relationship with all the invested partners. We've enjoyed many years of success and a positive school culture climate here. However, the tide has begun to turn. We seem to be transitioning from a time when we have worked collaboratively to achieve a win for our students, to a time when we are an opposing team. This is not what we want to see happen. We will gladly join you at the negotiating table to have an informed, respectful discussion. However, we will not continue to be insulted by people who don't think that educators have real jobs, or by people that think we don't deserve equity in this town because we don't save lives. We will not be bullied or intimidated by proposals that continually get further away from where we are, rather than closing the gap. We will not be swayed by the disregard of those who say, "If you don't like it, leave, we have 100 more people to fill your position." Sure, you can find someone to fill any position, but can you find 100 award-winning band directors like Fritz Benz? Can you find 100 Rhode Island State Teachers of the Year like Tracy LaFrenia? It's one thing to fill a position, it's quite another to fill the shoes of our dedicated, high-performing, and award-winning staff. If you don't believe it will happen, you should know that it already has begun. We've lost quite a few very talented teachers to other districts, along with invaluable administrators. As a matter of fact, I just heard of another educator that has decided to leave the district, and this will only continue to get worse unless we begin to move in a more positive direction. Never have I seen the morale so low in our schools. Teachers who for years and years have given an inordinate amount of their time voluntarily are starting to question how long they should continue to take time away from their own families, when they feel as though their efforts are neither respected nor appreciated, only dismissively expected. In light of the committee's stance that they're not interested in paying for our voluntary activities, we presume that those activities are not valued, and therefore, the loss of them will not be a detriment to students and the community bodies. It is our intention that the students of North Smithfield not be affected during this difficult time. However, surely it must be clear to you that together we are charged with the task of educating North Smithfield's youth, and as such, every decision that we make, every decision that you make, affects students. It is an unavoidable reality in the world of education. The good news is that we still have time to restore what we once had, but only if you are willing to work with us in this endeavor. With this in mind, I was disappointed to see an agenda item tonight referring to unprofessional teacher behavior. What could have motivated such an item? Could it be an issue with a teacher that needs to be shared with the committee? Perhaps, however, surely this would be more appropriately addressed in executive session. Could it be that the committee wishes to work out an issue with the NSTA? Perhaps. But again, it seems as though a more appropriate venue for that discussion would be a meeting with the NSTA. What could be the purpose of this agenda item? We are only left to infer that the committee, or at least some of its members, wish to publicly malign the good name of teachers. Fortunately, I believe that the community overwhelmingly values and respects their teachers, and that our positive reputation will prevail. Now, please understand, I am addressing the whole of this body with these issues, but I don't believe that every one of you agrees with or approves of the way that our relationship has begun to decline. I say committee because it is not my intent to publicly malign any individual sitting on this board, but rather to urge you collectively to respect your educators and to respect the negotiations process. I appeal to those of you who disagree with the negative tone that negotiations have taken. I appeal to those of you who recognize and respect the value of education and educators. I appeal to those of you who want to forge the best school system here in North Smithfield. If you disagree with the negativity and lack of progress, stand up, speak out, and help lead us to a resolution. We have been, and continue to be, ready and willing to work together to find a resolution to not only a contract, but to all issues that affect education here in North Smithfield. We are at the table. The question is, are you willing to join us?
Hello, my name is Robin Hall, I'm the president of this year's senior class, and I live at 1445 Providence Pike. I am here tonight to speak with you for a moment about the upcoming teacher contract. I want to be very clear that no teacher or administrator in the school department has asked me or any of my classmates to come and speak to you tonight. In fact, those of us here tonight are taking time out of our study time and our extracurricular activities to come on this very important issue. I am here predominantly to address the process by which the adults of the community are resolving the teacher contract. Excellence in education comes at a price, and that price includes competitive diversity in educational choices, compelling and important opportunities for students across all academic levels, and experienced educators, as well as numerous extracurricular activities that help round out our students. This is a price that everyone in this room is willing to pay and should be willing to pay, because that is what makes our town great. The reason I ended up in North Smithfield 14 years ago was because my parents believed that North Smithfield School Department would give me and my sisters the most quality education possible. I know I have certainly achieved that education, and I know that every single teacher in this room works every day to make that possible for all of my classmates. Part of my education was a class solely based on the study of civics. The We the People students who are here tonight talked about how government is what they learn about, and that class taught me many things that I still use today. The essence of what we learned in that year, and as the advocates tonight are learning this year, is that civics should be based on the principles of stability and respect. With that in mind, we can honor both of those. We can honor both of the values of fiscal prudence and the values of educational excellence. Thank you for being a role model to those values as you fulfill your duties on the school committee. I hope that each of you strive to gain experience in your own workplace, and I hope that each of you is compensated for your time and experience. I only ask that you ensure the same for our educators, and have reasonable and fair negotiations. As I have stated, the We the People, that one of our school's most notable and award-winning programs, has taught us that civic engagement and civil engagement should be both respectful and fair. I respectfully request that you yourselves demonstrate those values and make fair and reasonable decisions that benefit our schools. Thanks so much, I really appreciate it.
You know, I talked to Phil, you made a really big point of recognizing people, and we all try to work on it, and there's just an opportunity right now, I want to definitely recognize it, even though we didn't mention it, because he's very modest. Robin, you have a lot of the students who like and attend to go over, and we had for this Sunday, they were in Clock Jazz Festival, like 1H, the Jazz Band, the Jazz Chorus, and the Middle School Chorus, again, taught by Mr. Academy, Mr. Benz, and they won all the events, pretty much all the type of wins at all the events, a very prestigious Jazz Festival, I'm very proud to see the kids do that. Robin, and the guys, and ladies and gentlemen are with you. Nice job, and good.
The next person who signed up to speak is Gwen Brankin.
My name is Gwen Brankin, and I live at 32 Cruden Street. I am the corresponding secretary of this year's senior class. As of right now, all events, including our senior events such as Senior Trip of Prom, will be only held pending the willingness of the adults in this community to volunteer to attend the Chappelle Awards. We'd be very grateful if the members of the school committee, as well as other members of the community, would volunteer their time. The freshman and sophomore, 70, is Gabriel Purge. The senior trip is the main point, and junior prom is 1977. Senior prom is June 3rd. If anyone is interested, please see myself or Robin Hall for information. We have four of you, if anybody would be willing to take one and attend our events. Thank you so much.
The next person who signed up to speak is David McNeil.
Good evening, my name is David McNeil, and I live at 26 Mallory Avenue. And I'm here tonight as a parent. When things get like this, I get concerned, so I just want to come out and express my concern. Times like this remind me of when I was in school and some of the lessons that I came away with. Two of those lessons are, get what we pay for, and people what we sell. My first point, I'd like to say, to this point, we've gotten what we pay for. We have quality teachers and quality support staff. And the evidence is here in this room tonight with us. We have Rhode Island Teacher of the Year, we have Golden Apple recipients tonight. Their accomplishments are here as well. We have spelling bee champions. We have We the People who are represented tonight. We have extremely talented young men who can come up here and express their concern. That's a direct result of the education that they've received from the staff and their support. My kids are now coming up through the school, third grade, second grade, and preschool. And I have some direct experience myself with the quality of the staff. The direct feedback that we get, the individualized attention that my children receive is noted in the comments, the feedback, the homework, everything. We go to parent-teacher conference, and as I'm sure many of you can attest, they are not short. And the reason for that is because these teachers care. It's evident in the feedback that we get, it's evident in just dealing with them. You know that they care. We need to maintain that, we need to keep this type of quality. This type of quality is the foundation that any educational system is built upon. What I mean by that is, you might come up short in supply sometimes, quality teachers and quality support staff will overcome that. We might have aging facilities, but quality teachers and quality support staff will overcome that. You can't really put a price on that, I just want people to be mindful of that. My second point, we reap what we sow. What I mean by that is, the actions that we take tonight and going forward, and actions taken in the past will have repercussions for years to come. One of the reasons that I moved to North Smithfield with my wife is because she said to me, "I went to school there, they have a great educational system." Pointed out all the accolades received in the past, and I said, "You know what? That makes perfect sense. We've got support, we've got a great school system, it's close to where I work, it's doing." So I'd like to see that continue in the future. What I get concerned about is to hear teachers leaving, support staff leaving, and some of the reasons being the negativity around that. That's extremely concerning to me. If that continues, and we continue to see this foundation chipped away at and corroded, where will we be 20 years from now? Well, I can tell you, my kids won't want to move back here, they'll look back on the experiences they had and say, "You know, it wasn't that great of an education. I'm not sure I want to raise my family in that type of environment." What happens then? Kids move out, they don't come back, you don't attract the quality families and types that we want to have here that builds our capital base, that can then have the tax base that we want to be able to fund directly, these types of things. So just bear that in mind, that decisions we make today, actions we make today, how we conduct ourselves today, will have a direct impact on what we're able to do in the future and how we're seeing it going forward. Thank you.
The next question, the sign of speech, A. Low.
Hello, my name's David Low, 80 Highview Avenue, North Smithfield, the taxpayer of North Smithfield. I've been trying to get onto the agenda for a number of meetings about discussion about a police report on Mr. Clifford. And every time I try to find out any information, it's either we can't address it, or there will be other times to address it, and it always seems to be in this kind of forum for moments to talk about it, where you're gonna sit here and talk about two minutes or three minutes. My question to you, Mrs. Low, is that, we have a police report in the states that he followed buses around, we had Mr. Clifford who violated your bylaws of going out on his own and did his own investigation. I've seen people disbar from your position for doing less than what this is, and I was wondering what you were gonna address it, address that. I tried to get on the docket so that you would address it, so I'm asking you now.
And what is your specific question?
What have you done to address this problem with Mr. Clifford, following the school buses, going out on his own, violating your bylaws without getting the information, having your backing as a school committee to go and do this investigation, and you will love this? And I've seen Mr. Kyle get pushed out of his position for trying to control the meeting with Mr. Clifford, so I'm asking you for a response.
We have the item on the agenda for discussion at the end of the call.
So this will be my fourth time I've tried to discuss this, so what date will that be when we can try to discuss it? Will be able to stand up and speak it, or are you gonna?
No.
No.
That will be up for voting.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good evening, my name is G. Mayo, I live at 1180 betrayal. I live at 11 Talk to Your Trail, and I'm a former school community member, a grandparent of children within the school system, and a very distressed community member. Last month, I came before you with a concern I had noticed at the previous month's meeting, regarding the lack of respect from a majority of your members towards the superintendent and the administrators. And I said that behavior was shameful because they are the educational leaders of this community, and their opinions should matter. Three weeks later, I read these same words, "lack of respect," in the Valley Breeze regarding the teacher contract negotiations, and I asked myself, why you as a committee cannot see the big picture and cannot understand the harm that you are doing to this community? And I am hoping that the words and the concerns shared tonight by some of your constituents who are representing the ones who really matter, our children, as well as the students who make us so proud of this school system, I hope their words will cause you to stop and think. Without dedicated teachers, a school system is nothing. Teachers are the ones that we entrust our children to. They are on the front line every day. They are the ones who are responsible for our consistently high scores and good reputation as a school system. They are the ones who make a difference because they lay the groundwork and the basics for every other profession. They deserve your respect, and they deserve your willingness to meet that halfway and negotiate with a smile on your face, because otherwise, it becomes a battle that everyone loses, especially the students. Enough is enough. You should be trying to build bridges, not close doors. I said to you last month that your perspective should be the education that goes on in our schools, and your job is to advocate for what our students need and deserve. The teachers are a part of that, and you should be working with them towards shared goals for the success of this school system. I'm asking you to please talk to each other, especially to your negotiating team members, and advocate for a different approach for the benefit of our students. Thank you very much.
My name is Bruce Chenical, Lipid Five, Myron. I'd like to start off by saying that I used to be one of the naysayers, part of the uninformed public, whose perception of teachers were distorted by lack of knowledge. I believed that a teacher's life was all roses and no thorns. Three months in the summer, off, vacation during the year, weekends, holidays off, and great pay. Who wouldn't want that job? I wanted that job, until I married a teacher. Then my whole perspective and understanding of attitude changed towards teachers. It changed not because I was married to one, but because I was able to see firsthand the amount of time, energy, effort, and anxiety that goes into being a good teacher. Education is always progressive. Teachers have to change and adapt to these progressions. This means taking extra time to become proficient in the requirements. So, where in their normal day do they find the time to learn these procedures? They don't. Their extra time comes, they're off the clock and at home. I fit off them. Teaching affects not only the teachers or students, but those around them, by intruding their family life. It's a misconception that teachers work eight to three. I haven't seen that in a long time. In fact, they often work up to nine hours a day on weekends. I see my wife sometimes spend up to two hours of work, homework, on the weekend that she cannot get done at school. Teachers take their job very seriously, they worry about getting through to students, they help them to become the best that they can be. They do their best to make sure that they are up to date with educational requirements, they do their best to see that the needs of these students are being met, all the while being judged on their performance by the educational system that fails to acknowledge that teachers can only do so much in the time they're given. That family and environment affects students' attitudes and learning abilities, and that no one person should be held accountable or judged on those limits. School never leaves my wife's mind, it's always there, and I'm sure it's the same for other teachers. Many people think that teachers get paid well. After seeing all the extra hours, extra week, extra work, and the little recognition they receive, having not only to be teachers of education, but wear hats of nurse, teachers of social skills, and counselor, I say it's not enough. Do I want to be a teacher today? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dr. Kerry Tonnecliff. I'm representing Rhode Island College. I'm an associate professor. I'm also representing North Smithfield as a concerned resident of 7th Sunny Crest Avenue. I'm talking on behalf of the potential to change the physical education requirement. I've directly worked with the Health and Physical Education Department over the past eight years and witnessed their major transformation and their alignment with the school-based standards, as well as the school-wide initiatives. I am here to applaud you as a school committee for aligning the physical education standards with the CDC and the Department of Health's 225 minutes that they recommend, rather than the Rhode Island minimum 100 minutes. The CDC has completed a literature review, and basically what they found is, with the 225 minutes, if students get this every single week, what happens is, attendance scores increase. Students' attention increases, their test scores go up. Their cognitive ability to pay attention in class increases tenfold. North Smithfield's SAT scores, as seen on your website, as well as your kneecap scores, are exemplar, which is amazing, and which is one of the reasons why I moved to North Smithfield. The proof is in the statistics. Research demonstrates that quality physical education and quality physical activity improves academic standard. Although I cannot make a direct correlation to physical education in North Smithfield, standardized test scores increasing because of physical education, I can with absolute certainty say, right now, North Smithfield is educating the whole child, not just their mind, but their body as well. I believe that the 225-minute minimum recommendation that you have is a necessity, it's an investment in our child's future. And I implore you to please continue to be a leader in the field of physical education in the state of Rhode Island, and not just look at the minimum state requirements. Thank you.
Back to the public comments on school committee agenda items only.
Sure, is it for this agenda item?
This bottom?
I think she wants to check.
Do I have to sign, or can I just go?
Well, yeah, I see it will be on. Is it this agenda item, like the public comment item?
Yes.
Is it an agenda item?
Yes.
Okay.
My apologies, I just couldn't get this podium to sign.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, Ada, 46 Uptown Street, North Smithfield. I'm really just here to echo what we've already heard from many, many people here tonight. I can attest to these teachers. I have three children in this system, and I thank all of you, because I know my children are the ones emailing you and texting you at 10:30, and I can go by 11 o'clock, how come they haven't gotten back? You work so hard, and you have built this amazing community, you should all be so proud. I thank all of the leadership, the guidance, everyone who has made this the most amazing school community that I have ever seen. My biggest concern is, you know, here we are in election season, and all I can think of is Russ Perot and this great suck it sound. And that what's going to happen is, we're going to dismantle this system, and these teachers are going to start to say, "You know what? I could go somewhere else, I could get treated better, I don't have to do this anymore." And that's my worry. We can sit here and we can thank these teachers every single day, but there are other ways to be able to thank them for everything that they do. Thank you.